Good evening, everyone. It is so good to be here on today and to come together. I'm very excited about what is going to take place tonight in our Mark Public Hearing. My name is Robin Anderson, and I am the pastor of the Blackwell Amysian Church, but also I am the executive director for the Ministerial Health Fellowship. And along with the Ministerial Health Fellowship with Connecticut Students for a Dream and Make the Road Connecticut and also Health Equity Solutions, we make up a coalition called Health Equity for the People by the People. We are a coalition of Connecticut-based organizations to make really a, to make healthcare really more affordable, but also even more so to fight for affordable healthcare as it relates to Black, Brown, also immigrant communities, and that together we fight to expand healthcare by increasing Medicaid income eligibility and also include, which includes all citizens regardless of their immigrant status or even their ability to pay. And so on tonight, we are very excited on tonight for our goal is really to provide tonight the tools to prepare us to execute an affordable healthcare plan, campaign for the 2022 legislation session and beyond. So this workshop, our last workshop was on storytelling and also letter writing and writing testimonies. And so tonight, we get to put it into action. We get to put it into work. And so we want to make sure that not only will we be participating, but we want to hear from you. We have both a pre and post evaluation that we'll be doing at the end of our session for you to fill out to see how everything goes and to see whether or not, you know, there's some things that we can do to really improve everything. So please complete that at the end of the presentation. And I just really believe that your work, your feedback from, from these workshops are very, very helpful. And so now we just ask that you would stay muted and also that you would hold back your questions, which I'm sure you'll have many once the testimonies and feedback is given. And then you'll have a chance to really participate in this session on tonight. So again, welcome. We're so glad that you're here and we're looking forward to a wonderful evening. I guarantee you that when we leave here on tonight, everyone will be ready for the 2022 legislation session. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Katia and she will come forth.
Thank you, Reverend Anderson. So we're gonna give a few more minutes for folks to do the pre-workshop poll that has been posted on everyone's screen. A quick reminder while folks are doing this to please remember that we have interpretation available for everyone. So if you just showed up, please go to the globe in below your screens and choose your language. If there's English and Spanish, there are Spanish speakers here on tonight. So for the English speakers, if you want to hear those responses in, in, in English, please press that button. Mientras esperamos a la gente que haga las preguntas que están en el cuestionario en la pantalla, quiero que recordarles a todos, a las personas que acaban de entrar, que por favor, si necesitan interpretación en español, que vayan al globo de pantalla, el globo que está, el icono del mundo pequeño en la parte inferior de sus pantallas y elija el botón de español para que pueda escuchar la presentación en la lengua que usted prefiera. So vamos a darle unos minutos más para esto. We're gonna give folks a couple more minutes, one more minute to get this done and we'll move forward. Okay, well, while folks continue to do the pre-workshop poll, please, there's still like 26 out of 41 of us that are here. Please complete the pre-workshop poll. But while that happens, I'm gonna start with the presentation because we have a lot to cover today and we're gonna get to the public hearing portion of this. So welcome everyone again. My name is Katia Daily. I am the healthcare campaign organizer with Connecticut Students for a Dream. And I am here to have a quick presentation in regards to like what expect about a public hearing, how a bill becomes law and why are we here? So these slides are gonna be, this presentation is being recorded and the slides will be shared after this workshop has ended. So if you missed anything or anything like that, we'll have that information for you. So the organizers of this event are nonpartisan and invitations to take part in this event were extended to state legislators from both major parties. So they're gonna be here setting up a panel for the Mark Public Hearing in a bit. So as I said before, this, this quick agenda in regards to why are we here? We're gonna introduce the panel. We'll have our testimony sharing space, feedback, and then we'll have questions and answers at the end of the event. And we'll do the post-evaluation survey at the end as well. So why are we here? We want to make sure that everyone uses their voices to and engages on, has civic engagement to make sure that we have changes in our communities that we want to see to have healthier lives. So the purpose of this event is for us to zone in on those skills and prepare ourselves for the 2022 legislative session. This is so, this specific workshop is to familiarize ourselves with the public hearing process and get from the select, from the selected testimonies that we have lined up today. Those folks will get feedback on their testimonies and how they're expressing their beliefs from our panel of legislators. And so really quickly, want to go over the legislative process that happens in Connecticut. And it starts with an idea. This idea is written into a bill and this is introduced by a legislator and assigned to a committee for review. Unlike Congress and most of other states, Connecticut has both assemblies, like a joint House and Senate committees. So these committees act as a bill's overseer. And the committee co-chairs will decide to hold the bill by not allowing it to receive a public hearing. But in the case that they do allow it to have a public hearing, this, the public will be able to share their comments on it. So this, the public and governor officials will be able to comment on the bill. And after this public hearing, the committee can accept or reject these ideas expressed during the public hearing and hold a vote. If this bill passes the vote, both chambers may vote on the, on the bill or there could be amendments to the language of the bill. If, if one chamber amends it, then the bill has to go back to the other to, for another vote. So a bill has to be passed by both the House and the Senate with the same language to be enacted. So if the bill does pass both, both chambers with the same language, then it will go to the office of, of the governor to be signing to law. If the governor does not want to do that, he will beto the, the bill and a two-third vote in both chambers is needed to override that beto. If the, the bill is signed by the, by the governor, then the, the bill becomes a law and is codified into the state law books. And so that's the process, the legislative process here in Connecticut. Your elected state legislators want to know why you think about proposed legislation so before they vote, while they're reviewing it. So some things that how you can engage on this process is by calling them, writing them letters, emails to express your views and also getting your point across by testifying in a public hearing. So, so the public hearing is, it can be complicated and it has become a little bit more complicated because of last year's pandemic and it has been virtual. So this is why there's, the advocacy groups are here for you to use as a resource and we will send action alerts and directions on the process so we can uncomplicate this for everyone. So getting ready for the public hearing, it will help everyone to know their number of the bill that you're interested in. And to find that out, you can do it in two different ways. One, you can call the bill status information room. The number is on the screen for you all. Or you could also go to the Connecticut General Assembly's website, where would you be able to retrieve the bill status information on the bill that you are interested in, including current text, up-to-date actions on the bill, the introducer of the bill, a statement of purposes, and the co-sponsors, legislators are co-sponsoring the bill that you are interested in. Other things that you may do before the public hearing is to write down your remarks. Make sure that you have your viewpoints and reasoning behind those viewpoints set so you're able to express them effectively at the public hearing. There is no need to provide copies, but if you want to leave written testimony, it helps to make enough copies for all members of the committee holding the hearing. And this is more in-person guidelines before the public hearing. So the committee staff can note, make these, the copies for your testimony. So you might need to do this ahead of time. And then turning in writing testimony before the hearing begins so community staff can distribute it systematically. There's an email where you send your public, during a public hearing before, before the, the hearing starts. When you testify, there are some procedures that we need to keep in mind. The speaking order, the committee, one of the committee co-chairpersons will preside over the hearing, so setting the rules that seem fair for the circumstances and calling speakers for the sign-up sheets. At many, but not all hearings, the first hour is reserved for legislators and agency heads or invited guests. So remaining speakers are usually called in the order in which their names appear on the signed-up sheet. And although some chairpersons alternate between supporters and opponents of a bill, chairpersons often ask large groups to appoint a single spokesperson. So some committees hear all testimonies in one bill before proceeding to the next. So following the agenda printed in the bulletin is very important for everyone to make sure that everyone gets to testify. So comments and goings, goings from legislators. So some hearings last for several hours. I've been to one that has been 12 hours long. So legislators may leave and re-enter our room if they are scheduled for more than one hearing or meeting. Do not worry, the testimonies are fully recorded so legislators can read it later or review it later on time. In the decorum, a hearing is an important step in the process of making a law. So it's a formal occasion. So please you give your courteous attention to other speakers regardless of their view. Please folks, if you can mute yourselves so that the speaker can continue the presentation. Thank you so much. So where was I? So yeah, please be courteous, attention to other speakers regardless of their views. Don't applaud or indicate pleasure or displeasure with anyone's remarks so that we can continue being respectful in, in the room. So this is that I'm gonna go through some tips on how to make sure that once you're standing in the podium or in, in front of everyone in the, in the committee, you're ready to, to do your testimony. So when you're called, see the speaker's desk if it's in person and you can maybe begin with team members of the committee. Introduce yourself clearly and distinctly. Also say the town that you are from and the number and title of the bill that you'll be speaking on so the transcriber can understand. In addition, most hearings and meetings are covered by the Connecticut network. So these, the hearings are broadcasted over local cables, access stations. And then after you're done with the testimony, please see or leave the hearing as you wish. It is in-person, in virtual, you can leave the Zoom room. Other tips? Indicate right away whether you support the bill or oppose it or are offering suggestions to improve it. Then explain your reasoning. Follow this procedure for each bill that you will be discussing. Keep your remarks short, three minutes is usually enough, but be sure not to exceed any announced time limits. If other speakers have already made your point, please you can say that you agree with them or want to associate yourself with those remarks of one or previous speakers. Your views and your name will then be clearly on record. When you finish, please remain at the microphone for a moment in case committee members want to ask questions in regards to your testimony. So this was really quickly, the, just some information in regards to a public hearing, the legislative process. And so now we're gonna be moving on to our Mark Public Hearing. And we have a panel of legislators that have come and joined us. I'm gonna pass it, the microphone to each one so that they can introduce themselves. But before that, I want to quickly remind everyone that we do, we have interpretation for folks. Everyone, please click on the small world icon at the bottom of your screen and choose your language. If you are using your phone, please click on the three dots to access interpretation room and choose your language. Antes de empezar con el panel, quiero decirles otra vez que hay introducción, hace introducción accesible en español y por favor haga clic en el icono del mundo pequeño en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Y si está en teléfono, puede clickear en los tres puntos donde va a encontrar el botón de interpretación para que lo pueda escuchar esto en español. Okay, so without further ado, I will pass the microphone to Representative Turco to introduce yourself and then we'll go down the line.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. My name's Gary Turco. I am a House representative and represent the 27th district, which is most of the town of Newington. And I am serving in my second term. I serve as the vice chair of the Higher Education Committee and I serve on the Veterans Affairs Committee and the Appropriations Committee. And I'm really excited to be helping out with this tonight. And I'm really excited that all of you want to learn how to testify and be effective at it because we really need to hear from you at the Capitol. We need to hear from people from all different backgrounds with all different viewpoints so that we can help make the best laws possible for the entire state of Connecticut. And I'm hoping that after today, I'll see a lot more of you either on Zoom or in-person in public hearings on the different committees I serve. So thank you, everyone, for having me.
Representative Hughes?
Thanks, thanks for having me and thanks to Gary too for going first. And like him, I'm in my second term, serving in the House. From, I serve Easton, Weston and Reading. And I started out as a testifier in front of the General Assembly in the wake of Sandy Hook for the gun safety legislation. Hours and hours and hours in front of, I remember Senator Winfield then. But you know, I, I realized the impact of, of testifying to not just bring and amplify my experience, my lived experience as a, as a social worker in human services, but to amplify the experiences of others as well. And then in the, after the 2016 election, I prepared and trained to become a policymaker myself and to champion healthcare for everybody in Connecticut. Affordable healthcare, you know, regardless of immigration status and it's continued to be one of my top priorities. I'm a vice chair of, on the Aging Committee and I serve on Human Services and in the Labor and Public Employees Committee. And I echo what Gary said about the importance of the public testifying and bringing your lived experience so that we can make better policy.
Thank you, Representative Hughes. I'm gonna pass it to Representative Phipps now, which will be our co-chair for this Mark Public Hearing. And also please mind the, the timing of your introduction just so that we can get to the, the testimonies.
So good evening, everyone. I am State Representative Quentin Q. Phipps of the great city of Middletown, representing the 100 district. If you've ever eaten in Middletown, you've probably eaten in my district. I am the co-chair of the Aging Committee. I also serve on finance and on commerce. And I think I've already said that I'm on my second term and also a proud member of the Black and Puerto Rican Caucus. So should I, am I handing it back to you or might, do you want me to continue?
Um, so we'll do Senator Adore Winfield and the, the rest of the representatives and then we'll move, move forward.
My name is Gary Winfield. I'm a state senator from West Haven and New Haven. I am the co-chair of the Judiciary Committee. I sit on a whole bunch of committees. I would forget to tell you what they are. I've been in the General Assembly since 2009.
Thank you, Representative Foster?
Hi, everybody. My name is Representative Foster. I represent Ellington and East Windsor, just north of Hartford. And I am really excited to be here today. I serve on the Public Health Committee, the Children's Committee and the Energy and Technology Committee. But in another hat that I wear, I'm a research scientist and I do population-based community participatory research. So all trying to get people to inform the research that I do. And I believe policymaking should be the same, informed by, meant to serve and best used by everyone. And so I'm so glad to be here for the chance to sort of hear from all of you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Representative Cheeseman?
Good evening. I'm Representative Holly Cheeseman from the 37th district, which is East Liman-Salem. I'm in my third term. I'm the ranking member on the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. I serve on Energy and Technology and General Law. And I'm delighted to be here this evening. I'm, as they would say in the UK, from the loyal opposition. So I think it's important that you learn how to make your case to both sides. And I'm delighted to be here with this bipartisan panel and give you some tips on how you can persuade us. So I look forward to the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just saw Senator Anwar come in. So if, hopefully they were able to, oh, there, there you are. If you can introduce yourself.
I'm super excited. I am between one meeting and the other, but I am listening in and I'm very excited to hear from you and I'm also looking forward to sharing my perspective as we move forward with the meeting. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. And so because we're running a bit behind time, just really quickly, the explanation of the process and the timing. We will call each speaker and allow them to speak their testimonies. Two minutes time limit. Then ask the legislators to provide feedback. Three to four minutes time limit. So if you, if, if for some reason there is like maybe two legislators per speaker and if, for example, if there's no time for, for the rest of the legislators, please put the feedback on the chat so that we're still able to get everyone's feedback for those speakers. And so, and the committee chair will allow panel members to ask the questions, if any. So our first speaker is Doris. Hopefully I can, we can spotlight Doris so she can start her testimony.
I'm sorry, I didn't expect to be called on first. Okay. My apologies for not being ready. I had my four-year-old just walk in.
Doris, would you like us to come back to you?
No, I am ready now. I have my apologies again.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished, good evening, distinguished members of this committee, this team. My name is Doris Maradona and I am a registered voter in Mi Pueblo, Connecticut. I am, sorry, I can hear echoes. This is exactly what can happen during Zoom. I share more than, I'm here testifying regarding HB or SB 123 and Act Concerning Telehealth. I share more than professional expertise as a person with disabilities and a head of household. Between my children and I, we have over 16 invisible disabilities, including physical and mental health, thus making us immunocompromised. Our family lost four make triarchs last year, including my mother. One of my sons survived 16 days with a false negative COVID diagnosis right after the world shut down, only to have my mother pass in April. And I've had unexplained medical complications. Telehealth should always have been an option prior to COVID and more so now. Health access should be revered as a human right and a civil right. Our communities remain disparaged by health, housing, food and employment insecurities. Without health, the rest have become a pipe dream, further ostracizing our marginalized communities. Telehealth has decreased the overwhelming fear when it's not adding to anxiety because of lapsed internet bandwidth, adequate devices and funding to maintain communication. Our increased provider counseling, educational counseling, family counseling and access to peer and support groups has helped band-aid our challenges as we attempt to mass and support others, hoping for the sun, that the sun will come out tomorrow and the next and be on the day when the world was forced into isolation. I've advocated for my surrounding communities and their civil rights in pursuit of happiness. It's health. Person's sense of telehealth empowers dignity and respect when integrating community strengths and cultures that families and professionals bring to the telehealth visit. Individuals and families define themselves and determine who and how they will participate in their care, decision-making, self-managing and telehealth visits. There are rural and urban communities often left without. Can we count on you? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Really quickly, so sorry, before we go into feedback, for the speakers to pick a little bit slower for our interpreter so that we are, the, our Spanish speakers can hear the entire sentence. But yeah, I'll pass it to.
Katia, I can also put that in the chat room, my, my testimony in Spanish.
Oh, that'll be, that'll be great. Thank you. Just Senator Anwar.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the testimony. I thank you for your testimony. I think one of the things people have to do when they're testifying is to, to speak about what they're asked it. I, I think with this, there's, there're multiple parts. One is of course making sure you're addressing the right people. You have the name of the bill. You have asked about the bill and specific thing. And then you present your authenticity. And I think you were excellent on the authenticity. You were excellent on all aspects, but you needed to be more clear about what you're asking the committee to do. And then sometimes you have to spell it out almost simple that, at, at, in a manner which is a fourth or fifth grade level that I want you to do this and this and this for me, if you will. So, but, but your authenticity was phenomenal. And, and, and if it was accurate. So, but, but, uh, your authenticity was phenomenal, and, and, and if it was accurate, I'm so sorry for your loss.
I don't know how we're doing this all. If I can't speak, tell me. If not, I'll just go. I think one of the things that people have to recognize is oftentimes they come in with a story, and then they read us their own personal story. I would encourage you to spend some time getting your story, your own personal story down, so that you don't read it. Because when you tell your story as opposed to reading your story, it is felt more. You had a story where you had personal loss, where this affected you immensely, and I should feel some piece of what you felt. I think that's critical to moving people to pay attention, right? We have a lot of stuff going on in that building. Uh, we're trying to pay attention, but we're distracted. Sometimes just the way you tell your story stops people, and they hear you in a different way. So the encouragement is to practice the story and come in understanding you feel comfortable with it and just tell it.
And I think we have a minute left. If I can just say one thing. Doris, I think you did a wonderful job. I feel a lot of things right now. Um, and so I also remember you from testifying in bills before on the Public Health Committee, and so you do have presence. And so I, you came, and I said, I've seen her testify before, before the Public Health Committee. And so that, just know, like, keep on practicing, keep on working, and keep on keeping on, because you have, you have, you've impacted me. And now a second, actually, did you testify twice this last year? So three times now.
Several times.
Yeah, so wonderful. Keep, keep up the good work. And I think too, like, I support this bill because, like Senator Anwar said, that's good advice. Sorry for being the third person.
No, it's okay. And for the rest of the legislators, if you have any other feedback, please put it in the chat. Um, but we are gonna move forward to our second speaker, Frank, because of time limitations. So Frank, whenever you're ready, please start your testimony.
Sí, vamos a hablar español. Muy buenas tardes, muy buenas tardes a todos, estimados miembros del comité, compañeros, muchas gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Mi nombre es Frank Cruz. Soy de Honduras. Vivo en Estados Unidos hace 17 años. Soy presidente de la ciudad de Briscoe por seis años. Soy un padre de familia, miembro, padre y familia de seis integrantes. Y como inmigrante y indocumentado, durante y antes de la pandemia, ha sido difícil e imposible calificar para cuidado médico, también poder calificar para asistencia federal o ayudas gubernamentales o estatales. Eso no fue posible para nosotros como inmigrantes por carecer de documentos o de un seguro social válido. No calificamos para ningún tipo de estímulo y mucho menos para el desempleo. La, la epidemia ha hecho mucho efecto en nuestro núcleo familiar económicamente y emocionalmente. Ya que perdimos dos familiares directos debido al coronavirus, a no tener seguro médico, nuestros familiares no se pudieron tratar a tiempo sus enfermedades preexistentes, como presión alta, diabetes, etc. En el específico acaso de la mamá de mi esposa, ella, ella se contagió con el COVID, con el virus. Le atacó los pulmones, el corazón, y el hígado, y ella murió en menos de una semana.
Thank you.
Ella dejó un niño de diez años. Un solo... Y este, este niño nos pregunta, nos pregunta cómo pudo pasar eso. Fue difícil, un solo... Es difícil para nuestra familia hasta poder pagar los gastos funerales. No teníamos ahorro, no teníamos ningún tipo de ayuda económica. Y pues logramos entre familia pues y amigos poder solventar esto, ¿no? Excuse me. Como, como padre de familia pues, yo tengo que seguir adelante, salir cada día, buscar trabajo para sostener a mi familia. Y ya que no cuento con seguro médico y no califico para uno pues, cuando me enfermo, hago uso de los remedios caseros y medicamentos naturales para lo que está a la mano. O a veces pregunto a la farmacia qué puede ser bueno para lo que presento en este momento. Yo visito los hospitales de emergencia ya solo cuando de verdad estoy mal de salud. Aunque pues después reciba la factura por la atención médica, ¿no? No es justo que como indocumentados puedas tener acceso a un número de IRS o ITIN number, con el cual todos los años puedas pagar, pagamos nuestros impuestos, y con ellos puedes adquirir un seguro para vehículo, puedes adquirir un seguro de vivienda, y hasta puedes adquirir un seguro para formar tu propia compañía en este país. Pero no tienes acceso a comprar un seguro médico, un seguro médico digno, ni con la mínima cobertura. Y para esta manera puedes prevenir a tiempo las enfermedades crónicas que, por ejemplo, sufrieron mis familiares. Nuestros hijos indocumentados sí reciben acceso a, al cuidado de salud, pero hasta los 12 años. Señores miembros del comité, necesitamos su ayuda urgente. Para la comunidad inmigrante y indocumentada sea incluida en el plan de la agilación del año 2022. Necesitamos su ayuda para que el programa HOSKEY sea para todos en estado econérico, sin importar el estatus migratorio. Muchas gracias por escuchar mi testimonio. Me disculpo porque esto trae muchos recuerdos. Sé que hay muchas familias que han pasado por la misma situación. Y confío en Dios que nuestros representantes, nuestros representantes podrán lograr hacer un cambio digno en beneficio de nuestra comunidad inmigrante indocumentada. Me disculpo otra vez por esto. Sé que no es... Bueno, no es natural, pero me disculpo por todo.
Gracias Frank. Um, I'm only gonna have one representative share, and then the rest, please put them in the chat. Senator Winfield?
Yeah, I just wanna say briefly, I, I hear, I hear you apologizing for breaking down, but you should not apologize for that. The one thing that's going to happen, I'm not saying to use this as a tool, but the one thing that's gonna happen when you're talking about something that is so impactful in your life, um, and you break down like that is, I'm going to be 100% sure that everything that you're saying is real for you. Um, and that's important, right? We, it's important that we know that what you're saying matches what you felt. Uh, because you're testifying to it, and it does a lot of good for people. Sometimes what you'll find is if you're in the building, for instance, you'll have legislators come and talk to you even more outside of just your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Winfield. Um, and just please the rest, uh, put your comments in the chat for this. Sorry for your loss, Frank, and thank you so much for sharing your story with us. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our third speaker, David. Uh, whenever, if you're ready, please start your testimony. David, your internet is not, um, working at the moment. Yeah. Oh, no. Um, David, your, the internet connection is not working? Oh, no. Okay. No, we cannot, we, we can, we can hear you the last portion of it, but like, your mic is not working. Is there a way that we could maybe have the information in the chat, maybe, and we can move on to our next testimony? I'm so sorry for this.
Why don't he, why doesn't he try without the video?
Oh, yeah. Let's do that. What? Uh, could you say it one more time? No, I cannot hear it either. Think, Don, do, do we think that we can like work on...
Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me now? Hello?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay.
Hello?
David, I think we're gonna move on to the next person just because of time limitations. No. No.
Can you hear now?
Okay.
Should I try the testimony?
Uh, could you, uh, David, could you just write your testimony on, on the chat, just so that we can have that? Um, and I'm just gonna pass it to Macaria, um, our fourth speaker, um, for the time being. Um, Macaria, if you're here, please, you can start your testimony.
Um, Katia?
Yes.
Macaria está ahí, pero está también igual teniendo problemas con el internet. Yo, yo lo voy a leer.
Yeah. Está bien Sonia, por favor, siga.
So ella me mandó su testimonio, so yo solo le voy a leer por ella. Buenas tardes a todos, miembros de, a todos, a miembros de representantes del Estado. Mi nombre es Macaria Cedeño. Soy de México. Y vivo en Briscoe por 18 años. Y este es mi hogar, donde vivo junto a mi familia. Yo como madre deseo lo mejor para mis hijos. Como madre soltera y indocumentada he tenido muchas barreras para salir adelante. Sufriendo discriminaciones, barreras sobre el idioma. Desde que llegué a este país fue muy difícil buscar información de seguro médico para mí y mis hijos. La barrera del idioma, la falta de información, y la espera por largo tiempo para que te respondan en tu idioma y te atiendan para darte una cita. Como indocumentada, no califico para seguro médico ni acceder a otros cuidados médicos. Es difícil tener acceso al cuidado médico y un lujo que no puedo darme como madre soltera. Yo tengo diabetes y presión alta. Dependo de medicamentos y especialistas que tienen que revisar y controlar mi salud constantemente. En orden para calificar a la escala de descuento, algo que no... La escala de descuento para poder seguir con mis tratamientos no cubre todo. Y no me da acceso a seguir con mis tratamientos y ver los especialistas. Yo necesitaba una operación para, para remover la vesícula. Me causaba mucho dolor y estuve que esperar para esta cirugía por un año. Y esperar por una cita que nunca llegó, ni tampoco me explicaron que no era cubierta por el programa que tenía de la escala de descuento.
Sonia, ya son dos minutos, por favor.
Fue una espera muy larga, donde tuve que esperar, donde ya no aguanté más mi dolor y tuve que ir a la emergencia. Donde mi vida estuvo en riesgo, y por no tener el seguro médico o seguir el cuidado a tiempo y dar seguimiento a mi cuidado de salud casi me cuesta la vida. Como mi historia, hay muchas personas que no tenemos acceso al cuidado médico. Y nos preocupa no poder cuidar de nuestra salud y la de nuestros seres que... Nos preocupa este cuidar y esperar por mucho tiempo. Y no es justo que nosotros no tengamos acceso al cuidado médico y tengamos que esperar al último momento para ir a la emergencia, para poder recibir los servicios adecuados y el mismo vídeo. Gracias legisladores por escuchar mi historia. Y necesitamos urgentemente su apoyo para seguir empujando el próximo año en el HOSKEY para todos, sin importar tu estatus migratorio. Gracias.
Thank you Sonia. Uh, any two legislators, please, and then we'll move on to questions and answers.
Okay, can I weigh in?
Yeah, go on.
Gotcha. Just, um, having seen some of the comments and listening to the testimony, bearing in mind that there is that time limit, it, it will not hurt. If you know you're going up to reach out to your legislator and say, "I'm gonna be testifying today", you will, we will have the, very often the testimony in advance. Here are some questions I'd love you to ask me, because I think that can help draw out some parts of your story. It also gets around, as it were, that three-minute time limit. But if you know there were particular points where you would like to have more time to explain to the committee, please tell your legislator you're going to be there that day, that you plan to testify, and you would welcome the opportunity to be able to explain in more detail and suggest some questions. Because I think that gives you a way to really expand on the story you want to tell and make sure that you get all the points out that might not fit in that three minutes.
Thank you. Um, any other legislator that would like to comment?
No. I, I just wanna say, I'm depending on the translation, and, and this translation was not good enough, so I felt I was completely lost. And, uh, so that's part of the difficulty as well. And I think, um, the, the earlier trans, uh, the, the earlier testimony, uh, that was in Spanish, there was emotion in it. So I connected and looked at the intensity of it. And when we know that sometimes you're dependent on reading something, then we need to see the human part and the pain, which is so much there. But it's, it's important to put some emotions in the conversation if possible. That's my thought, especially when you're speaking a language that many of the legislators may not understand as, as easily.
Okay, thank you. Um, so now, now this is the last, um, the speaker. I get up whenever you're ready.
Yes, I can start. Um, dear members of Connecticut General Assembly, my name is Kiera Raza, and I am a resident from Bolton, Connecticut.
Get up if you can slow down so the interpreter can also... Get up if you can slow down so the interpreter can also, thank you.
Um, okay, I am formerly undocumented and come from a family of mixed immigration status. I am also a member of Connecticut Students for a Dream and I stand in support of SB number nine fifty-six and act providing medical assistance to certain individuals regardless of immigration status. With clear language that extends eligibility to all Husky programs, to all Connecticut residents regardless of immigration status. Um, prior to having insurance through my husband's student insurance package at UConn, I was someone that feared getting hurt or getting sick due to the strenuous costs that it would put on my, on me and my family. I didn't go to my primary doctor for preventative measures because if I needed a specialized scare for my health, I will have to, uh, be referred out, um, to a community, out of a community health center, and I will not be able to afford the health services that I needed. I want to share my story from when I was thirteen years old, um, and I accompanied my father uh, to one of his routine checks with his physician. Um, I was interpreter for my father that day, um, and the doctor started a conversation with us, uh, in regards to my father's diabetes, um, history and the complications that can come if he doesn't see an endocrinologist. Um, at the time, my father was maintaining his blood sugar levels through home remedies, um, because the medications were too expensive and inaccessible for him and for us. Um, because we couldn't afford those medications, I let the physician know of, of our financial situation. And he gave us a prescription that was of a generic medication and had a lot of side effects that later, that later on my father suffers through. Um, my father and I left the clinic and I started crying because my father was suffering and in pain, um, and we didn't have many options to support him in any way. Um, we, if only we could have access to other physicians, other medications, just maybe we will be able to treat my father and get that specialized scare that he needed for his diabetes and access to other medication. Um, with my story, I have only covered the mental and emotional strain that undocumented immigrants face due to the barriers, um, to the, to the healthcare that they need. Um, there are definitely more barriers that immigrants face in the doctor's office, um, such as fear of deportation, distress on the healthcare system, lack of culture or competence in our providers and discrimination in doctor's offices.
Thank you very much.
All these gaps make it more difficult for immigrants to get preventative and long-term healthcare. Ensuring that all the immigrants can access Medicaid will take away one of the many barriers to, to care for immigrants, an important step toward health justice in our state. I ask all of you to think about your children, your grandchildren, nephews, nieces, um, your family members, when you hear about my story. Um, think about them shutting down in fear due to not being able to pay for an injury or a health concern that they may need to be seen through. Um, I support SB number nine fifty-six. We clear language to extend current Husky eligibility rule to all Connecticut residents regardless of their immigration status, and I ask the committee to support this legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kiera. Um, yeah, Representative Hughes.
Thank you so much, Kiera. I thought it was excellent. I loved how you, uh, basically remind us that you are all our constituents regardless of status or age and that we have a, a responsibility to represent everybody and to respond to the profound suffering that you, uh, that you have borne witness to, not just for yourself and your family, but for members of your community. And, uh, that lived experience is like, once we know, once we hear, once we see uh, that this is happening in our midst, we must do something about it and we can do something about it. And it's all about summoning the public will to do the thing that we know is right, right? So, um, thank you for your witness and thank you for reminding us that you are a constituent.
I think similar to what Ann said, it's really important in this type of testimony to remind people who you, how you are a part of the fabric of the community that we live in. Um, I feel like that's really easily forgotten. I think about when my grandmother speaks in a room and has an accent. I think people very easily forget all the tremendous strides and contributions that she made to our community and they hear an accent and they assume something. I don't know what it is. But I think for people to really understand, and I said this in my, um, test, in my response to Frank as well, but I think people really need to understand how everyday interactions rely on people of various immigration status who live and are part of our community. In my community, we have a lot of farms and it's very easy, I think, for people to forget that every one of those farms relies heavily on folks who are here on visas who have different um, immigration statuses than, um, people would assume. And I think that, that kind of understanding of how, like, you are part, an essential part of the fabric of our community, I think that that is really important for folks. Um, and so thank you for sharing your story and, um, I'm glad to hear that the UConn insurance was helpful because that was a hard fought battle. So, I'm glad that that made a difference. So, take care.
Thank you, Kiera. Um, and so, uh, for the rest of the legislators, if there's any other comments, please put it in the chat. Due to the time constrictions, we won't be able to do any questions and answers from legislators. But please, if folks can, um, ask their questions in the chat, maybe we can send them to the legislators who have been involved today and, um, may give any insight, um, um, at a later date with, uh, an email, um, just.
Gosh, is there, is there another commitment that you have immediately after this for the group?
Uh, for, for, from us to you? No, the, the, only the questions, but, uh, we can share those to you in, in, uh, an email.
I don't want to speak for everyone, but I would be surprised if, uh, more of us didn't have at least a few moments to stay on longer, if we, if we have the ability to go a little longer. I know, I, I know, I know I personally can.
Okay, awesome. Um, yeah, so maybe while we do the poll and also people are asking questions, because we do have a post-evaluation poll for the event. If you all can spare a few more minutes of your time, that would be great. Um, so yeah, so I'll pass it to, uh, Reverend Anderson to go through the comments and please, uh, share your, the questions, uh, for the rest of the folks in the chat.
Rep Fitz, did you have a comment to, um, that last one?
Um, more just a general statement for everyone, and that said, thank you, Rep Hughes. Also, what's been, great job, everyone. I said, I know how difficult it is in my, um, other hat in the, the real world. I am a parent advocate for a small school, um, in Stanford, so I know how difficult it is, uh, to go to the Capitol, um, and the sort of ambiance of it all, the gravity of it all, and especially when you're talking about things that are just so, uh, personal. And this is the work that clearly makes the connection between how the personal is political. So, I appreciate and was can truly humbled anytime, um, someone shares their story. So I think the biggest piece of advice that I would give, uh, and I think Senator Winfield started to talk about this too, is I would encourage you to send in your written testimony. Uh, that is very helpful for afterwards. Uh, but during the testimony, literally, uh, crumple it up and speak from your heart. Uh, share your story, uh, because once again, we, we can read it, right? We can, we can always read it ourselves. Uh, but there's gonna be, uh, I think some nuance and complexity. And to be frank, a lot of the emotional, emotion that comes with this work, um, that can't be read uh, from your, your testimony, that can only be shared by you telling your, your story, um, in your testimony. So, my, uh, encouragement to you all is to be vulnerable and, um, just tell your story. I think there's, I think there's plenty of times where you can, we can read it ourselves, but there's only one chance that you get to have your, I said, three minutes, um, to help us feel, um, what you have felt, what you've experienced, what you have gone through and how these policies will impact you and your family.
I just wanted to say, I didn't see any questions in the chat so far.
I just wanted to add, since you do only have those three minutes, as Representative Fitz mentioned, and some committees are really strict. And all bell will actually ring and you'll get cut off in the middle of a sentence and perhaps not be able to finish that thought. So really keep that in mind. Practice at home with a timer if you can to try to get that within the three minutes. But, uh, tell us the most impactful parts of your testimony upfront. The, the most heartfelt, the parts that you wanna make sure we're gonna remember and take with us, your personal story or why this bill really needs to get passed. Tell that upfront in that first couple of minutes, just in case you don't get longer than three minutes. Just in case there aren't questions asked by legislators that allow you extended time. Uh, I, I would recommend that and practice, uh, before you, uh, present as well.
Hey, can I just say, I just saw the comment about, uh, not everybody can memorize, and I think, I think we know that. And I don't, I don't think that we're saying that everyone shouldn't, I, I'm not even saying anyone should memorize. I, I think when people have the ability to, they should tell the story as it comes naturally. I don't, I don't think it's about memorization. I do think people should spend some time prior to coming thinking about what it is to tell that story within the constraints of the time. Uh, because when you don't practice, it's not just that you know it's going to sit in there three minutes, it's that three minutes is a lot shorter than you think it is. Um, and I, before I was ever elected, I spent a lot of time going to the Capitol and I was really successful. And it was because I practiced a lot. It was because I knew what the ticks of my, my testimony were going to be. Uh, and I always got a question and I always didn't need to go over the time to get people to pay attention. And I'm just trying to relate to people that the reason for that was the common emotions we all share. We don't all, I put this in the comments. We don't all agree on policy, but we've all had mothers, we've all had fathers, many of us have children and their common emotions we share. When you build that into your testimony, it has a tendency to connect to people just because they share those, those common things and common emotions.
And, and I think something that might be hard when people testify, I feel like you, you feel like you need to have like this really polished, um, like speech that's ready to be delivered, but it's a public hearing. We're expecting people from the public, which means everyone from all different, like, training skills, walks of life, that's who we want to come. Um, and so that doesn't mean like, I, I, and I feel strongly about this actually, like, I don't need every participant to relay data to me. Um, I feel pretty comfortable sort of wrapping my head around data and issues myself. I wanna hear from how it impacts you as a person for that specific policy to be enacted. And, and if you have specific, like, this is a data point you might not know, share those things. But I think it's important for people to feel like a bill's been introduced and it's got a public hearing. So I think that that demonstrates that people understand the need to some extent. But what they might not understand is how that bill would impact the people that they serve. And so those personal stories, I think, can be a lot more persuasive than in your written testimony that you submit after, or like in parallel to your, um, spoken testimony, that could have data points if you want it. Or if you have like line-by-line feedback, like this part of the bill is excellent, but these two sections I recommend being changed and here's why. You can say, you can flag that in your, in your spoken testimony, but don't feel like you need to say all those details then and there. If you deliver compelling testimony, we will look up your written testimony after. Even in public hearings that I participated in where there were hundreds of people who testified before bills, when we, I was going through written testimony, it gets easy because many people say similar things. But what, what I will remember is that person made me feel something. And so then those testimony, I read more carefully and judiciously. So I think that's a good, you know, I think, think about what you want your, the legislator to feel while you're there and then let the rest of that part be in your written parallel submission.
I'm just gonna add a couple of thoughts as well. Uh, first, I agree with each and every one of my fellow legislators. I think everyone has been right on point and an excellent, uh, points that I will benefit from. I just wanna say, if you're physically there, try to make eye contact with as many legislators as you can, because, uh, once you make eye contact, they see the human in us. And, and, and once they see the human, they're more likely to see the suffering and the pain. And, and some of the ones who are on the fence, they are more likely to move towards, uh, supporting you when they see the pain and suffering that you have. So I completely agree with every legislator and their comments, but also the written comments that they made. Thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna concur to a certain extent, but disagree to some extent with, um, Representative Foster. I think the personal is important, but I think for many people particularly, and I'm not gonna speak for everyone on, on my side of the aisle, but that data is important. If you make the point, you know, that the preventive care, if we're, if we're looking at actually, one, improving people's lives and, two, saving money in the long run, then having access to that preventive care, this is why we should be providing this. Because otherwise, we as a society, we as a state are going to be paying a far higher price, not only in terms of human suffering, but in terms of, let's face it, we don't have an unlimited budget. So this investment that, you know, by doing this now, we not only make people's lives better, prevent suffering, but this makes good fiscal sense. So I think that, that, you know, tell your personal story, but if you can, you know, because I was able to get that care, I was able to work, I was able to do this, I was able to be a productive human being, which contributes to the, you know, that's my, my read on this, because I, I think the personal moving story is important. But I think it's also important to, this also makes sense from another point of view.
Thank you for everyone's comments. Um, I think I'm gonna pass it now to Reverend Anderson to, um, yeah, bring together and conclude this event.
Thank you, uh, so much, uh, to our, uh, legislators. Also Katia, you did a wonderful, uh, and excellent, uh, job. And thank you all of you who have attended, um, all of the workshops. And, um, certainly, um, they all have been valuable and tonight has really been, uh, very valuable. And so we thank also our legislators for the great, uh, feedback that you also gave us. And we're looking forward to the two, two thousand twenty-two, uh, legislative session. And so believe me, you will see your comments in action and we will be there to testify and to, um, also, um, be part of the public hearings. Also want to thank our interpreter on tonight, Juanita, uh, for the great job that she has done. And, um, also just want to say, um, again, uh, we are Health Equity for the People by the People, which includes, um, the Ministerial Health Fellowship, uh, Connecticut Students for a Dream, also Make the Road and also Health Equity Solutions. We're very fortunate and blessed to have, uh, Dawn, also, uh, Fuller Bell to be our, um, leader. Uh, in this along with, um, everyone know Dr. Everett and also, um, uh, Ayesha Clark and the rest of the staff at Health Equity Solution. So again, thank you so much for coming tonight and I know that everyone left here. And thank you for those that also wrote testimony and also testified on tonight. We're thankful for you as well. Please fill out the evaluation, uh, that's there. Um, we really value you and value your feedback. And so please fill out the, uh, evaluation and send it to us and then we will probably also email it to you as well. Um, May, um, you have a wonderful, um, holiday season, um, and also that you would stay safe and that you would stay well. God bless you.
Night.
Night.
Good night. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing you in person because I hope we're gonna get people back in the Capitol in the next session.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us.